There's close at start of five thirty meeting, there's one here. Let's see. We do not have any people signed up for public comments that we. Okay, let's see. First thing what's there is approved the minutes of last meetings, February eighteenth. Then we don't have any comments and minutes. The points, then it's.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Motion received, second, I've got to do a further discussion on the last month's meeting minutes. Here it now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed. Motion is carried, so the minutes effectively include. So, let's see, no, no guest comments, so we will skip that.
Can I make one comment on the, just on our agenda, not on the.
Oh, sure.
At the bottom, it says next library board meeting, eighteen March three twenty five, I, I, I guess that's today.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
It's okay. That is a top quote, so. Five grand. Did you see that? Okay. And the moment you've all been waiting for is the, is the point of the new forty first seat chair, but I'll try to keep it down to forty five minutes. Let's see, I'm still trying to get my sea legs as it were, so we'll have to bear with me. Okay, I'll, I'll stop by the book sorter machine, that has good install. For the operations, if they're installed, it's deep though. She looks like a pretty impressive piece of equipment. Next thing with that is the bookie monster.
That was my favorite.
Yeah.
So there you have it, so the, the vendor is doing training.
I'll go on my bit too.
Yeah, okay, I'll pass, I'll leave that to Archimane. Let's see, I'm still trying to learn all the staff names and so on, it'll probably take five years to do that. I attended the foundation meeting on February twenty first, and I have. For here for Sonja is the, uh, the board from, uh. Profit Goodson, which is, uh, investment management company, and they have hired them to go through all the books, and we currently have a. Fund balance of three hundred and some odd thousand dollars, so. Three hundred and forty eight thousand, six hundred and twenty one dollars is what is in, is being handled by a wealth management. They're going through all that, Travis Gardner is the new chair of the foundation. They're working diligently through all of that. Any more. Is, uh, kind of everything's in a holler pattern now, so they get that going, we may need to do a capital campaign for future expenses, so forth. February twentieth of twenty twenty six is a meeting for the investment portfolio, now we knew that, so we could take yearly. Just kind of. Just kind of real quick overview, it was a really quick, very fast moving, boring meeting, so we ran it out in about five minutes, so that's, that's what that's all about. Let's see, and I'm attending a staff meeting here tomorrow, trying to, totally immersed.
Daily operate.
Way up with daily operations, so. Yeah, that's, it's going to be fun, so, uh, real quickly, and I will move on, there's a budget presentation that, that, uh, lovely colleague, Archimane, is going to do here in a few minutes. Uh, we met with Don Stallion at the Blood County, he's a general services manager, uh, trying to put together a quick budget for the library. Uh, I was able to discuss that. And we hire our new director, so that's, that needs to be discussed, so that is a good one for. Uh, next is Archimane, I can turn over the budget, that was not mentioned.
Okay, um, what is it, uh, well, I just want to say.
Sorry, your interim director.
Yeah.
So go ahead and look.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to say thank you, um, to, uh, the search committee for all their efforts, and, um, it was a, uh, very engaging process to be part of. And we thank you for your time and your dedication to not only this community, but to this library and staff, it showed through, so, thank you. And I reckon you'll probably be hearing that a few times more from a few other people. Um, what is it, wow, I hope you guys had a chance to read the director's report, there is lots of good stuff happening, but boy, is the community being very vocal about the things they like. I think every single department this month had some kind of kudos that was received, um, from a community member about the work that they do. And I want to say, in all my time here at the Blood County Public Library, I dare say, in all my years of library experience, I have never experienced a board report where every single department received. Community kudos, so, let's just take a moment and revel in that a little bit. Yes, it was. It was, yes, exactly. Team Morton makes the dream work, and we've got it going on, so. Uh, I am happy to say that the World on the Move program that was, uh, or traveling exhibit that was with us in February, had, was thoroughly enjoyed by the community. Um, some of our programs were pulling in a hundred and fifty and a hundred and thirty, uh, participants, um, that were very well perceived. Um, the, the taste of the international food tasting, even though it was affected by an inclement weather day, it was well, um, attended on its, on its, uh, backup date. Um, so, uh, we want to thank, um, all our programmers and staff that made, um, engaging and interacting with this traveling exhibit such a wonderful experience for our community. Um, let's see, and I'm happy to say we packed it up and it's moved along. It was, it was big, it was big, uh, the, what is it, it shipped out on Monday, the tenth, and the final grant reporting is due on, due on April fourth of the next, um, board packet. You might see some stats on, um, on that, let's see, so, really, uh, the, the kudos from, from each, um, department has just blown me away, both on social media. And then in person, um, what is it, we had. We had a community member who attended the plant and seed swap post, thanks to the B C P L for the event and the information that was shared. Um, and then they shared the information that they got from that event on their own social media site, so, that's impactful, that's a beautiful outcome. We also got another post that says, if you love your library, especially the Blood County Public Library, let your representatives know, that was wonderful. We had, um, Summer attend a, um, United Way helpline, and I would dare say, I want you to talk about it, can you talk in time, you want to cover it?
No, so the United Way, um, offers every month, uh, where nonprofits within the area get together and just kind of discuss some things going on with them, what's coming up in the community, it's just a really great way to network with the, the people in the community. And it was really neat, this last, um, meeting that I attended, I had multiple, um, people come up to me and just thanking the library, um, for the services that we offer, for the meeting rooms that we offer. Um, especially those that we discount for nonprofits, um, and especially for being open on the weekends, that was something I got multiple times of how throughout the week, people tend to work. Full days and don't have time or the energy to come to the library after working hours, and so for us to be open on Saturdays and Sundays gives everyone the chance to come here and utilize our resources. And so I just wanted to share that, that the community really is thankful that we're open on the weekends, yeah.
And then, uh, it's wonderful, I can go on, and I will, just a little bit more, uh, we also had, uh, community feedback that, uh, this, this, um, user would. Wanted to express her appreciation of our library, complimented how lovely and lively it was, spoke highly of staff's kindness and eagerness to help. Thanked us for the events and programs we offered, and assured staff that due to her extensive experience with libraries around the country, she truly meant it when she expressed how lucky our community is to have such a beautiful and welcoming place for patrons. So, and then of course, as in total, uh, staff fashion, they, our staff responded back with a hearty thank you to Ms. Dottie from all of B C P L, so. If, that was, that was wonderful, great report, we also had a vendor reach out to our P R team and ask if they could use one of the P R assets that she created for their own catalog. That's not an everyday experience, um, so, kudos, and I have to say that, um, Sarah and Zoe are doing a wonderful job. Very soon, we will be having a landing page that can, keeps the community updated with what's going on with the book, with the book return and the, um, Bookie Monster. Um, the Bookie Monster was a community competition that ran for, I think it was three weeks, um, asking the community to vote on names. Um, and so, what is it, uh, Bookie Monster ruled out, but there was a close second of Dolly Sorton, and then the third was. Scandolf. Scandolf, so, but some other ones were Valde Sort.
There were some great ones.
Yeah, they were great, it was really good, very hungry Scanna Pillar.
I was, that almost got me.
So.
They were good.
Um, we are having a lot of fun, and it looks like, um, and we're very excited, and it looks like the community sees it and appreciates it, so, that's a wonderful report. Now, let's see, um, other highlights, oh, that I wanted to share even from the friends, the friends who also always do so many wonderful things with us. Meg got her, Meg volunteers to repair our items so that our items have a little bit longer shelf life. Well, she got herself a thermal binding machine and is over the moon.
I want to see that.
So, please take a moment, swing by, see Meg, she is happier than.
You're welcome.
Yeah. So, thank you, um, it was, it was good to see.
I'm having fun being Santa.
Um, let's see, okay, the A M H, or Bookie Monster, arrived Monday, yesterday, the installation was completed today, and tomorrow morning, training starts for the staff. Now, there, the P R team has met with, um, the patron services manager to make sure we come up with a communication strategy so that we're keeping the community, um, involved. And aware of, uh, what to expect over the next coming weeks, because, just because the fences are down, um, doesn't mean that we're quite ready, we've got to adapt. We've got to learn the device, we've got to see how that works with our, uh, processes, and then we've got to make sure that, uh, we adapt to that so that what our patrons experience is good library service. From the beginning, moving forward, so you'll notice some lovely caution tape, uh, we tried cones, but we have a very dedicated community, and if they can get in, they're gonna, so. The tape is up and the tape will stay up for a little bit longer, um, but we will, as I mentioned, be creating or launching a landing page and directing, um, community, the community to that landing page. So they know where we're at and what to expect. Okay, all right. Um, we did meet with Don Stallions, so, it has been a very, very busy time. Um, we did meet with Don Stallions, not last week, but the week before, late in the week, and, um, at that time, we reviewed all the additional capital requests. Um, I'm happy to say that all the new capital requests were discussed, that they could basically become maintenance requests through the year. But I do have more detailed notes on that, and I will be sharing that, um, later, I just haven't had a chance where I can go back and do that. Um, okay, the fiscal year twenty six budget presentation has been submitted, um, and, uh, as of today, it has had another change. All of you have a link to this budget presentation, I will be removing the slides that say current, um, updates or amendments to current year's budget, they want those taken out, so. Um, if you've seen those slides, they'll be taken out, I would like to encourage all of you to look one more time, um, because once those are taken out, we're not expecting any changes to the slides. And I'll be working on the narrative, um, what is it, I'll be running that narrative by, um, some, some of the board members to make sure, and then I would like to encourage any of you and all of you. If you have questions, if you have concerns, if you have thoughts, please, please reach out to me, because we want to make this presentation as strong and as succinct as possible. So, we want to make sure we're all on the same page, telling a powerful story, and I hope I can deliver it the way Richard did with his numbers. Kudos, so, um, what is it, uh, also, please put in your calendar that on April fourth, from ten forty five to ten fifty five, we will be presenting to, um, the Blood County Commission for.
Many.
Budget, budget committee, many. Thank you, um, and if you are available and can attend, that'd be great.
That's good time again.
Ten forty five is when we're slotted, but if you want to be there about ten thirty and just see how we go, sometimes there's some flexibility, um.
Don't ask me.
Yeah.
I don't ever get to go.
Okay. Gotcha, yes.
So close, I'll take that time.
Um, so yeah, if you could, if you're there by ten thirty, you're probably good, and then, um.
So.
Our wish room. Yes.
In the commission room, so.
Okay, any questions?
So, John, you know, is that in our engineered, is that briefed by exception, or is it a, what we would call embrya program, so you go in and you brief your briefing and then leave, or how is that conducted, you know?
Sorry, I don't know, Richard, like I said, I've never got to go, number one, I'm not on budget committee, and number two, I'm always at school.
I've gone with the school one, and it's, it's a presentation, it's a one shot for the budget committee to see.
Do they brief by exception, or they do line item?
Yeah, nothing happens at that, that is a presentation.
You can say brief by extr, by exception, yeah, yeah. Now, there is, there is a lot of, I don't want to say behind the scenes, because that's not the right word, but there is a lot of other work that we're not involved in. Um, for instance, there's a slide where the budget trend is going to be, um, discussed, but that's through, uh, the finance department. So the budget committee will get a lot more data than what is presented in our presentation, our presentation will basically be saying, here are our accomplishments, here are the goals, we have accomplishments for this past year, here are the goals for the next year. These are any exceptions that we want to address, and then, um.
Let's do this one, that's what I was wondering, there's a lot of detail missing, so I didn't know how that was.
Yeah.
So, the sausage is made, I'm sorry.
It's kind of the first act, there's a lot more that goes on after this April presentation.
So, some of the items we met with Don Stallion were taken out of the library's, uh, purview and went to the county, maybe.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so kind of clarified a lot, helped, helped a lot for your actions. It may take a year to do them, but still, yes.
And that's the main thing, was to get it on the timeline.
Well, it may be a good thing to know, and I don't know, I know how schools do, and does the county have, is it legal for them to do line item exceptions on the library budget, do you know?
Well, that's essentially what they do in kind of.
Well, I mean, once it's submitted and so forth, I, I just didn't know, it's not, you don't do that with school budgets, but I didn't know about library, so I was just wondering, you never mind, do your.
I can find out, I believe the answer is, they wouldn't, they wouldn't do that.
I don't need to know that, but he's a trans, he's, so he might live in that text, but I'm just curious.
I was curious. I will, I will ask.
Can you bring out sausage?
Um, that is it for the interim director's report. Uh, now we can move on to the financials, um, we are quite solid, um, in the way that we are trending this year, it is looking very good. Our revenues are, um, above the expectations for this time of year, and, um, our expenses are under. Or our operating's a little bit over, and I believe, one, you'll see, there, there's two reasons for that, one is that our utilities, and so we'll move over, students' requests. When you sat down at your, um, chairs this evening, you saw two, uh, commission budget packets, and, uh, for April, I would like to submit these for the budget committee to, um, consider. They both deal with this fiscal year, um, and the first one we're going to look at is the request to increase the utility line item, it's the thinner of the two. And each packet will consist of a memo, a resolution, and the budget amendment. Um, what is it, basically, when we met with Don, what we found out is that there are some compressors that are faulty or already had, um, within our chiller, and that, um, they need to be replaced. Um, we are requesting that it be taken out of our library fund balance, which is, um, I believe, seven hundred and six thousand dollars, so there's money for that. Fund balance is typically used for this kind of capital expense, so, um, and we've got the support of, uh, not only the library as a department, but the general services as a department, and then finance is aware of it as well, so. This one, uh, will hopefully be very, um, actually, I'm sorry, God, I think I muddled those together, started talking about utilities, didn't I? Lots of numbers floating around, let's take two, so we're talking about the utilities line, this year, we have experienced, um, a, I think it's a sixteen point eight one percent increase. Um, uh, from last fiscal year to this fiscal year, um, in our utilities line, so that means our electricity and our gas. And, um, basically, we believe it is due to, one, there was, uh, an increase in the rates, as well as during the coldest time of the year, we had the building open to the elements. And because of that, we saw an increase, um, much higher than what is in our current appropriated line item for utilities. So, we were appropriated a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, we believe it'll be a hundred and eighty four thousand, four hundred and sixty nine dollars and twenty seven cents, and so we're going to the commission or the budget committee to ask them if they'll consider allowing us in this one instance to, um. See if we can apply fund balance, um, what is it, I will also be exploring, if fund balance is not an option to us, um, we will be looking at other areas that we can take it out to see. Is it possible that because of the shortage in staff, uh, for as long as it has been, there might be an opportunity to take it from personnel, but what does that mean? Um, because of the way everything fell down, I don't, you know, timeline fell this year, I don't have all those answers just yet, but I wanted to let you know what we are ready to present. To, um, the finance department, after your approval tonight, we'll submit it to Carrie, um, or the finance department, and they will come back with suggestions and recommendations, and if those change significantly, then we'll be letting you all know, and there's opportunities to discuss them before. So that is the utilities line, um, or packet, any questions on that?
We need to have a motion and prove that out, and we won't waste the other part of it.
Well, so here's the thing, this has to be, this has to be submitted by March twenty eighth, I wanted to do it with your approval, so if you make a motion to pass it today. If you will, um, also include in that emotion, in that, in that motion, um, that if finance makes any recommendations, that it comes from a different area. That you will be in support of it, is. I make that motion.
Sir, second.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion, I have notes for you, Archimane, it's like the middle of my plate.
Beautiful, thank you, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Uh-huh. Well, the next packet is the, and, uh, really, guys, I'm sorry, the next packet was the chiller compressor replacement, okay, and this is the one that's got several county departments, um, support in it, so this one should be, um, a lot. Easier of a hurdle to clear, um, one, we know with, um, clarity that fund balance can be used in this example, um, and typically is. We know that in order for us to have a working air conditioner this summer, this repair has to take place, so, um, I really think this one's a lot easier, any questions?
Need a motion?
I would need a motion, and I would like to also encourage the caveat that, again, if finance comes back, um, or perhaps if Mr. Fogg makes suggestions that are. Not substantive changes, that that be acceptable so that we can.
All I'm doing is on justification.
Okay.
Yeah, it just strikes it in justification, the one thing I will say on the, on the utilities line, the impact, so, you've got on here, the impact is the library service funding will be reduced. That's a source of funding, not an impact if the requirement's not funded, so that's just why, and what I would do is tie these together, if the chiller is an easy sale. And, and you know that the utility consumption has increased because of the faulty chiller, I would put that on there so they can tie the two together.
Gotcha.
And so if they approve this, ergo, I had to approve this, if I justified that I need to replace the chiller, then the utility increase can be attributable to, I don't know if you've got that data to show, but anyway, we.
So, so, then, then that would be the kind of change, because what I'll do is I'll take that information, I'll go back to general services, because I don't have that data, and if it exists, and they support that kind of change. If the board is okay for me to make that kind of amendment, and of course, as soon as we know what the final submission looks like, I will let you guys know, there were no changes, there were changes, and this is what it looked like.
Make a motion that we approve, uh, chiller request with any necessary changes from finance and.
Board recommendation.
Yes, board recommendation.
Sir, second.
Sir, give it a further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Ah.
Opposed. Motion is carried, so, Archimane, you will.
Yes, sir. Sir. And the first reading on the sheet, eight.
Yes, okay, if everyone could put on their can, uh, on their calendar, April eighth, that will be the first reading.
That's the agenda workshop, and that's when, that, that's the bud, the budget meeting is at five, the agenda workshop then will be at six thirty, so that will be the first time that the commission. The budget committee and the commission gets this and to discuss it, so.
That's April.
April eighth, budget meeting is at five, and the commission meeting is at six thirty.
Who, who can attend that?
Anybody. Anybody in the world.
Go to that, I can't go that far.
I'll, I'll be there, but I'll be sitting horseshoe.
I will be there. But if one or any, you know, um, of you, and you don't have to decide right now, it would be great.
What I meant, um, we need to have a dozen of these for the, to go.
We haven't really ever done it that way before, but if, if, I would like to encourage all of you to attend.
Yes, I just had previous commitment, I would go.
Yeah, thank you.
But if someone could go. If something could go on stage. I have a lot of previous commitments for some reason.
Right now, I think.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
First. Do you think anything else to?
Any questions on the financial reports left? Sure.
Okay, here it done, let's move on to the point of the foundation. The word Previs is not here, but I pretty much said what happened with when I went to the foundation meeting. So there's a lot of people there, a lot of good interest, and they are generating um protocol to go out and try to give you more money, you know. So it's just, I mean, we have a huge wish list, not enough money in my lifetime to do what they're, so it's gonna be a, it's gonna take a lot of work to get funds in to do what needs to be done. So this financial group is uh, you know, wealth management company is, is using kind of get as much return on investment as they can. So that's, that's where we're going. Previs is on top of that as far as uh organizing the quality. Fundraising efforts. Then we have the next meeting was, I forgot when it was. It's in April, April forty first, I think. You want to go with that?
I was thinking that.
Okay, either one. Uh, Sandy, your turn, can we report with the premise?
Sure. Um, I'm not quite clear on what the trustees need to know, but what I can report to you is we just had our uh spring book sale. Uh, a lot of chaos, a lot of excitement. I just wanted to give you some of the numbers because I'm, I'm amazed at how well this operation does. We sold over eleven thousand books. Wow. Uh, and, and we geared almost just under eighteen thousand dollars.
Wow.
Um. And then that is in addition, and, and for some of you who, um, I'm not sure if you realize, we also have a, a robust eBay business and they are grossing, uh, no, they're not grossing. They're netting each month somewhere between eleven and thirteen thousand dollars. Um, so you, you hear about foundation and needs, then my job is to make sure that we are providing what we're supposed to provide to you. We have lots of robust conversations about this too. What should the foundation be funding and what should be, we be uh funding? Um, and we are working, I mentioned to you last month, on a new strategic plan. We're updating our mission to make that clear. Our mission was a set in line kind of vague thing because we want to make sure when there's a new director coming in, that we're clear on what our mission is and uh vis a vis what everybody else's mission is. And right now, we stick pretty closely to programming that the library has requested assistance from us. We've done about things like book returns, even though the newspaper said we bought that. We did not. Um, so just to be clear on that. And the other thing I went to let you know, I've been in touch with uh with Mr. Garner and with uh Mr. Breakbill, and the three of us are gonna start meeting regularly, hopefully in, hopefully in April. Uh, Park was kind of busy pretty well.
April seventeen percent point first, and that's the next foundation meeting, so yes.
Yeah, uh mainly to, to iron out some of these things and to make very clear that at least the three uh presidents, chairs, whatever, and the library director are clear on who does what, whose mission is what. Because they're all really different and uh we haven't been, and historically, we haven't had a lot of conversation about that. Um, and I think that is it. Um, our next day will be in June, and I would encourage you sometime when you have time. If you haven't attended one of those, it is very well organized chaos and gets a lot done in two and a half days. Thank you.
It's a lot of fun. And I want to say thanks to the friends for your uh funding assistance with the director certain as well as your participation in the evaluations and the interviews and all that you all do. So, well, I should thank you all, and I actually had it on my notes to say, uh, we were surprised and gratified that you invited us to participate because we think of ourselves as sort of an extraneous funder and we enjoy meeting to get it through much. Appreciate you allowing us to.
Okay, last but certainly not least, Liz.
Good to be with you all. Um, so I have, I sent documents upon time, um, wanting to get this date out. And I, you all meet monthly, so a, as soon as we hear from uh folks about our set date for trustee workshop, which is different from the online trustee certification program modules. This is the one day workshop that we host annually. Um, we co-host about four of these across the whole state. We try to offer at least a day for all of the board members, all the trustees across the states. We have ten ten. The one that our region co-hosts with our sister region, Falling Water River Regional Library, that five times fact, uh is uh will be on September twenty fifth. It will be at the Art Circle Comic Library where we typically have it, which is located in Crossville. That is another level five library in, in Falling Mars region. It's a level library. We have good food. It's a good day to come uh and, and network with other board members and learn about things that you may not know about, although you all are very savvy, so you probably could do it yourself.
No.
Uh, but we would love to have you join us, and I just wanted to get the save the date out there so that you will know the date that we'll be hosting our trusty workshop. Um, in keeping with uh our March report, of course, training is a large part of what we do as um parts, as a part of regional system, each one of our member libraries is required. All paid staff at all tiers are required to get a certain number of continuing education hours because we believe in the power of professional development, especially in librarianship. It's a lot more than just checking out books. It's so much more than that, and it changes a lot. Um, we have to keep up with technology and all kinds of things. So we offer, um, this month, we've offered a five-part series um on data analytics and message design, um focusing on gathering accurate data and using that for advocacy for leverage. Um, in May, we will be hosting a workshop on community engagement and partnerships. Um, so we encourage frontline raised staff to be, to attend that. Trustees are also welcome to attend if they would like. Um, the talk grant, which is made in the public, uh is open right now. The application window is open, it closes at the end of this month. You can see there um that grant awards are up to as much as twenty thousand dollars. There's a very low match, um anywhere from five to twenty percent locally, depending on service area population. Uh, and you can get things like um pay instructors for digital literacy classes. There is no match for that um for libraries seeking just funding for paying instructors. There isn't a match. If you try to get internal connections or someone charging tables or hotspots, there is a match for those. Um, let's see, um, we're encouraging folks to look at their board appointment lists. I know it's March and it seems like June will be over soon, but that is typically the end of our terms for folks. So just be aware, I know you all do a fantastic job of that. Um, budgeting requests, you know, you all are looking at that also. Um, and I believe we reported last month, but I'm not sure. We have updated the trustee certification program modules. Uh, and so those are newly revamped. That is our online trustee certification program, uh which consists of ten core modules. And then finally, we have the REEDS report, the REEDS circulation report. Um, this is for those of you utilizing the living. Um, this is what that is. So the statewide consortia is REEDS, which is the regional ebook and audiobook download system. Again, libraries that are a part of the regional system receive access to the REEDS statewide consortia for free as part of their membership. So digital keeps going up.
Somebody who said these numbers.
It is amazing.
Yeah, I've read it again.
Regional ebook and audiobook download system. Yes. Yes. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Not a problem with REEDS, you all have two weeks to read it, bud. It's been two years for me.
Some of those audio books are like thirty hours.
Okay, there is no old business, so we will move on to new business. There's a interlibrary loan policy. Is that, that is kind of the first.
Yeah.
That's the first one of this, so.
I just had one little click. Um, after dash right here, I wasn't sure if that needed to be a dash or a comma or.
Oh, which looks like.
After has a fee, just a punctuation.
Where, where is that separately?
Uh, it's on that first page, uh, the third section from the bottom. Um, has a landing line, it does a fee. Yeah, it was just.
That will be ready for next.
Yeah.
We'll go on this next meeting. Then we have a request for a, for ten of twenty five thousand dollar donation that can be applied to the state. You want to, remind me what?
The foundation wants to accept that.
Yes, that's fine.
It's worth.
So, so basically, um, what is it? Uh, someone was notified by an attorney saying that um someone would like to leave the library twenty five thousand dollars. Because of that amount, it activates our gift committee. Um, what is it? Our gift committee was unable to um meet in person, however, via email. We all uh, and, and there's representative from the library, the library board, the friends, and the foundation where we all basically said, are we okay? Do we all feel that this is a good idea to uh give these funds or direct these funds to the foundation? That committee voted yes and would like to um, to bring that to the board to see if you're in agreement or wanting to discuss it.
Who, remind me who the board member is, because I know it used to be Logan.
It was Greg. Just because it was so, with, with, yeah. And it hadn't, because it, it only, the gift committee only like comes into play when there's a something, and by that time, look, we hadn't.
Yeah.
So they can only grip to a certain dollar amount, is that what we're saying?
So if it is nine thousand nine hundred ninety nine dollars, then the, the director can decide where to apply it. If it's above that, we assemble the committee.
Yeah. So we need a motion.
Um, or. I, I, okay, so um the gift committee.
The gift committee approved to give it to the foundation?
Exactly, and would like, yes, so if you make a motion that you accept.
Uh, let's see, gift committee recommends approving, the foundation to accept. I'd say we just approve it.
Yes.
I, I don't.
We just do a motion and.
Yeah, I, because I don't think we'll need any.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we uh accept the gift committee's recommendation.
As I said.
All those favor?
Ah.
Those, what's your theories? I remember my peripetarian history, when the committee makes a recommendation, you don't beat the vote, something like that. Anyway.
I, I, for the, I mean, I'm not a member of you all, but I think it's very odd the friends are part of the gift committee. I was surprised when I was involved in that because we sell books and we give you the money we get from selling books. We don't really need to be messing with donations.
The reason, the reason that came into play was because um.
We had to decide if it went to the friends or the foundation.
Exactly. And, and the, the, it was decided at that time that it would be better made as a that all three support agency or that both support agencies knew that was available and that there was agreement moving forward because at times there hadn't been, so we were dipping that in the book.
Okay. I appreciate you getting included.
The, uh, the final new business item is a funding request for AGMH carts. Was that right?
Yes. Yes. The Bookie Monster. Um, so what is it? What this will also mean is we have several rec, several carts that need to be retired. Um, they're having the wobbly third wheel that really, I mean, when it's loaded, it doesn't straighten out. So. You start to, I was gonna say, you start to use your core just to drive these big boys. So um, what is it? They will be replacing older carts that have either worn out uh due to, they either need repair and they can't be repaired or general wear and tear, and they will be going down to the friends that, you know, um, could use them or they will be moving on.
I move that we accept this proposal.
Second. We will present it.
Uh, any discussion further? Do you want stainless steel carts or red ones?
Uh, well, there's five large blue ones, three small blue ones, and one end panel shelf.
What's an end panel shelf?
So it is without sounding sassy, you can click exactly on the link. I don't know off because it says book truck in panel shelf. So I'm thinking that something hangs over the side of it. Um, but it's been a while since I've clicked on that.
Look it up, yeah, I just thought.
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
Apologize for being. Second, all, all those favor?
Ah.
Okay, most cheers, so.
I'll see you next week.
And that concludes our business, let's look at these dates real quick. They're bottom, uh, we have a meeting on the twentieth bar, which is uh, it's the. Friends meets the twenty fifth.
Yeah.
Foundation is seventeen. So, Rammel City Council is April first. Our co-commissioners, April the eighth. Is that, does that conflict with the Blount County budget thing on April the eighth? Is that the same thing?
It's a different time.
Different.
Yeah. But it's, yeah, 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 um, but all the same.
Their meeting's at six o'clock.
Okay. And then the uh April fourth is the budget presentation for our stuff at the courthouse. The next library board meeting is today, so.
April fifteenth.
April fifteen. We can all do our time.
Next month, we will be discussing uh trustees assignment.
Yes, we do have.
Recommendations for trustees to, to fill.
Yeah, a board, board. You know, those will have to be considered in the county, right, for five or four.
Uh.
Or, or to maybe.
County?
I'm, I'm county, but there are some that are city of, city of near volume or.
You're.
Well, that's county, that's county.
You know, you're city, I've already talked.
But it is, you're still.
I'm trying to think who my, who my trustee nominee was.
Um, Sean is county, and he needs to be reappointed for his second year.
You're city. Well, you've been removed too, so I've already talked to Greg.
Oh, what can I do?
Stephanie, you're county. Greg, you're memorable city.
Marvel city, yes.
Yeah.
And who? Yeah, who's that? Lauren is county.
Counting, mhm.
Yeah. So we'll be talking about those next time, that'll be on the agenda.
So we have a position down here, yes. Greg's.
Greg's renewed, so I'll be thinking about.
Mine and Lauren.
Your situation.
No, no.
That was very bad. That was very bad.
I'm county, all right.
Lauren and I are both county. And then Sean's, Sean's county, and he's also hopefully removable.
I'm assuming that, that there's a certain person who, who could be on it with me.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
No, they can't.
They can't, even though the city's.
Yes, they can't.
They can't, but as long as they live in Blount County, it doesn't matter.
Okay, so.
Yep.
Alright, I hope it was confused you.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a motion to adjourn? I move we adjourn. All those is favors, hand it up.
Thank you all.